Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Evening, everyone.
I just give up.
Want to welcome everyone to the regular public meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of litigation and real estate. We have some exciting things that are going to happen. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Kenny.
Good evening. Thank you. How's everybody? Um, so there's two special events going on tonight. One where we'll be saying goodbye to somebody and one where we're saying hello to somebody. The person we're saying goodbye to has a hard time sitting still. So we're going to make him wait and we're going to do the, the new guy first. You know, he, he needs to learn how to relax a little bit now. So, uh, first we're going to, uh, do a squaring in of Bobby King. Bobby, come up here for a second. Um, Bobby's been, just graduated the police academy about two weeks ago from Temple Police Academy, uh, local to the area. Um, Hopper, grew up in Hopper, up in Moreland, went to LaSalle High School. And we passed over, well, I shouldn't start it that way. He was on our, he was on our radar for over a year now. And, uh, he is such an impressive guy. His family's impressive. They're just, they're just good people. And I called his dad after he didn't make it in our first round and told him that if we get a chance again, and this true, if we get a chance to see him again before he gets scooped up, we're hiring. Um, and he, and he did incredible during our last process. Um, the biggest question when people see Bobby, you know, we're going to start seeing them in public now or to see them in the police car. And there's going to be that question that he's going to get asked all the time. And, and people are going to wonder, and I'm going to say, you know, you got a great answer, Bob. You know, you started the first week of January. That was the same week that we changed our policy on shaving and we changed it just for you. Cause look at this guy back here when he was twenty-one. Back thirty-nine years ago. He looked like he was sixteen also. Yeah. So you got a lot of, lot of great years ahead of you. Um, we're thrilled that you're with us. You're going to have an incredible, incredible career here. And we're all just, I, I'm sad that I won't see the whole career, but I'm going to enjoy watching you and seeing the good things that you do for the community. So with that, uh, we'll call up our full-time judge. Uh, Patty Zaffarana, honorable to do the swearing in. And I believe, who's going to hold the bottle for you, Bob?
Want him to file a major right hand and repeat after me. I Robert King.
I Robert King.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances and regulations of Lower Gwinnett Township.
And the ordinances and regulations of Lower Gwinnett Township.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce.
And enforce.
The law.
The law.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
And that I will discharge the duties of officer.
And I will discharge the duties of officers.
Of Lower Gwinnett Township.
Of Lower Gwinnett Township.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Good job. Bobby comes from a law enforcement family. His dad is with us tonight, uh, retired Pennsylvania State Police. His mom is with us also. She's passed on, but she's with us. She's retired or with Abington Police Department. Great friend here from Upper Dublin, Christian Fiedler. Uh, Chris has been a role model for Bobby for quite a few years also, and I know you're as happy as I am that he's here tonight. So, uh, congratulations, Bobby. So next we have Mike Rogie. Come on up here, Mike. Mike's leaving us. He's retiring after thirty-three years. Um, I've known him for the thirty-three years he's been here. I normally do not have any trouble speaking about anybody. And I'll get choked up if I talk too much about you. Um, you're an incredible person. I'm going to try and make it funny and then I won't get upset. There is, it was said many, many years ago. Mike Rogie is the hardest working person for Lower Gwinnett Police Department. And that was the damn truth. Nobody works harder than Mike did in his prime. Yeah, in his prime. It's very true. He cannot sit still. Uh, he is, you know, in police work, we often say, don't go looking for trouble. Trouble will find you. He looked for it, found it and it, and it got to him anyway. He, 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 you agree with me, right? You could not sit still. Yeah, he, he led our department for many years in traffic stops, pedestrian stops. I remember years ago when we were hot, you know, hiring some new people. And when it comes to safety and, uh, handcuffing and arresting people. This guy is the most safety minded officer we had. Um, he just does diligent work and at a hundred and ten miles an hour, uh, not speeding, but, um, we go way back. And I, I started working with Mike. I was full-time. He was part-time. I'll just tell one quick story where we were working one night. It was freezing, freezing cold, freezing cold. There was a lot of snow on the ground. And we had an alarm at a, one of Mercy High School. And we got there and it was really cold. And we, we're looking at each other like who's going to walk around this building? Neither one of us wanted to. And thank God a security guard showed up and he had a key. And he let us in and we're, we're just two guys just minding our own business, walking through a building when all of a sudden these two guys, they had got broken into. It's like two o'clock in the morning. And they come screaming out of the office. And we both looked at each other stunned like, well, now what do we do? And we ended up chasing them. We ended up, we did catch them that night. Um, that's, that's, I have so many stories of myself being with this guy. Um, he's an inspiration to us. The, the way he worked so hard, he just, he was great. And I'm really going to miss you. Our department's going to miss you. I feel really bad for your wife. That, you know, Mary, if you can come up here for a quick second, Mary. I know I'm going to embarrass you. I have a list here for you, Mary. The top one hundred things to do when you're bored. You can, you can give this to Mike afterwards. Um, talks about, uh, pickling your vegetables. Yeah, yeah. This, this is for Mary. When you're, you know, on her last nerve, she'll pick one of the top one hundreds. Um, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to the board. Um, we're going to celebrate Mike's, uh, retirement later on after this is over. Uh, but Mike, um, really going to miss you. It's, it's been a pleasure, but before you say anything, I'm going to turn it over to Danielle, turn it back to Danielle again.
So Sergeant Ervey, we all wanted to congratulate you on your, um, retirement and let you know how much we appreciate you at Lower Gwinnett and how much we will miss you. So some of our elected officials wanted to extend their thanks for your service and acknowledging your service. I'm going to read their citations first. Um, this one is from the House of Representatives. It's long. It says, whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania takes great pleasure in recognizing those citizens who selfishly devote their lives to ensuring the safety of their residents, of their communities, and ultimately of all people in the great Commonwealth. Sergeant Mike, Michael Rogie is being honored upon his April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four retirement from the Lower Gwinnett Township Police Department after a career spanning more than thirty-four years. And to his great credit, Sergeant Rogie served this country with honor and distinction as a member of the United States Marine Corps for two years prior to joining the Lower Gwinnett Township Police Department in nineteen ninety-one. Following his promotion to corporal in two thousand and one, he served as a traffic safety officer and he was promoted to his current rank in two thousand and seven before serving as a squad force supervisor. Sergeant Rogie served as a school resource officer from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two, where he was reassigned to the newly formed Community Response Unit. In addition, he has served at the Montgomery County SWAT team as an entry team member and a negotiator. Sergeant Rogie faithfully displayed great loyalty, commitment and professionalism in the performance of his duties as a member of the Lower Gwinnett Township Police Department. Since his enlistment, he served with consummate skill, upheld the laws of the Commonwealth and served as a role model for all those who aspire to a career in law enforcement. Now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania pays a respectful tribute to Sergeant Michael Rogie. Upon his richly deserved retirement, notes with pride and gratitude of his record of service, which far exceeds those standards normally described as exemplary, offers best wishes for every future success and happiness, and directs that a copy of this citation sponsored by the Honorable Elizabeth Hambridge on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four be transmitted to Sergeant Michael Rogie. There it is. Okay. This is from the Senate and this is from Senator Maria Collette. I'm not going to read the, the citation that Lower Gwinnett Township Board asks for you, but we have one and there's a lot of whereas's. However, we wanted to say that tonight we wanted to gather and honor the career of Michael Rogie. Throughout his tenure as a police sergeant, Michael has exemplified the finest qualities of law enforcement with a steadfast resolve and unwavering, unwavering sense of duty. He has tirelessly worked to ensure the safety and well-being of the residents of Lower Gwinnett. And Mike has many times during his career, patrol officer, corporal sergeant, school resource officer, and on one memorable night, a labor and delivery coach for a township resident in distress. Before he dawned the uniform of law enforcement, Mike entered another call to service, one that demanded courage and sacrifice in a different arena. As a marine veteran, he demonstrated valor in the face of adversity, embodied the core principle of honor, courage and commitment. So today, as Mike begins a new chapter in his life, we salute his contributions to not only our nation and our community, but to a grateful five-year-old that first met Sergeant Rogie on the night that she was born. While he may be retiring from active duty, his legacy of service will endure as an enduring testament to a remarkable career and an unwavering dedication. So on behalf of the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors, I want to extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Sergeant Mike Rogie. May your retirement be filled with joy, relaxation and a well-deserved recognition of a job incredibly well done. Congratulations, Mike, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Don't mention passing a fire truck. When you, you're, you know. Okay, okay.
Uh, thank you, everybody for being here. Um, and last Friday or two Fridays ago, thank you for that, chief, for having that happen. Um, I want to thank my wife and my daughter, uh, my other daughter who's not here, uh, who's in college in West Virginia right now, who I was glad was here on Friday. Um, thank you for letting me do this. Uh, thank you for putting up with me. Thank you for those phone calls at two o'clock in the morning when I jumped out of bed and never giving me a hard time about coming and doing my job. Mike Argon. Thank you. Uh, I don't even know what to say. You've been with me since the day I started here. Uh, and I appreciate everything you've done for me. Um, it, you know where it goes. You know how I feel about you. Um, Chief Kenny, thank you for everything you've done for me. Thank you for trusting me. Thank you for letting me grow, showing me the bad things, showing me the good things and letting me do it. I appreciate it. Everybody else who's here, all the, anybody who came and supported me, the fire companies, everybody else, please, thank you for coming. The department, I hope I leave you guys with a few things to some of those skills that I passed on to you, some of the younger guys. Make sure you pass those on that I taught you guys, please. There are things that I think are important that might help you. And I do need to thank one other person who's not here, um, Chief Hancock, who hired me. I started here as a dispatcher coming out of the Marine Corps with zero experience and no college. He had confidence in me. Uh, I put myself through the academy and gave me a chance. Uh, along with the township, thank you for the opportunity to serve and do basically my dream job for my life. And a very well compensated, I, I couldn't be happier. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
I want to thank, thank you, everybody for coming, but you don't have to stay. Thank you. And Jay wanted me to tell you, Jay wanted me to tell you congratulations. He's mad that we didn't throw you a bigger party. You're very welcome. You're very welcome. All right. See ya. Okay. See us. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome.
That's fine. You know, you can leave it there. Thank you all for sticking with us. Um, next up is consideration of, um, a submission letter for regional fire study. Included in our board packet is a memo. Um, oh. Well, before we go to that, let's go to public comment. Is there any comment on agenda items that, that are not, or any comments on items that are not a part of the agenda from the public? Seeing none. Now on to the regional fire study. Um, we, we got a memo in our board packet, uh, from our township manager to us as a board outlining, um, the path of the regional fire study. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Governor's Center for Local Government Services in Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, otherwise known as CED, completed a study on behalf of the Upper Gwinnett Township and Upper Gwinnett Fire Department, evaluating potential fire station locations. And in that study, they recommended that the Upper Gwinnett communicate with neighboring municipalities to see if there was an interest in exploring regionalization of fire protection before investing in any fire station planning and construction related activity. This action that is recommended by a township manager is for us to submit a letter of intent to the Governor's Center for Local Government Services in, uh, the Pennsylvania Department of D C E D to conduct a fire study on behalf of the Ambler Borough, Lower Gwinnett Township, North Wales Borough and Upper Gwinnett Township. Um, within that memo outlined is the requested scope of study as well as the conclusion and included is also a draft letter of intent. We're joined tonight by, um, our three, three local area, um, fire companies. We have Wiza Hickin, we have Al Comley. We have North Penn, I'm Frank Baxter. Uh, Upper Gwinnett, we have Joe Gordon. Is Frank not here? I can't see. I don't have my glasses on. I apologize. Bill Caitlin, thank you so much. And Upper Gwinnett, we have, uh, Joe Gordon. And Blaze Malali. Pronouncing your name right? I hope so. We thank you for attending. We thank you for, um, being present today. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments, any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion for us to approve, um, the letter of intent for regional fire study for, by PA's Department of Community Economic Development. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much and thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
It was like texting last night. I was sending some of you guys text messages. I don't know which one. No?
If I can just have a, a, a quick thanks for all of the firefighters coming out because they are doing this at all four municipalities of just a, a show of everybody is working together. We're all going to try to, to figure out the best way forward. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys being.
Um, I feel like you have to stay. And you don't have, you don't have to stay. Um, but you're more than welcome to if you so choose.
And nice to see you again, Jim.
Thank you guys for coming out.
Yeah.
And for all you.
You don't want to see how the sausage is made.
Next up, we have in front of us, resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen, a consideration for preliminary final subdivision plan to adjust the lot line between five thirty-seven Penland Pike and nine oh four Gypsy Hill Road, included in our packet as a memorandum outlining, um, what, what the lot line adjustment would do. And I think we have, um, Mr. Wentz. You can come up, Mr. Wentz, if you wanted to say anything. If not, you don't have to. Okay, so Fred and Lorna Wentz are proposing a minor lot line adjustment involving two residential parcels in the A Residential Zoning District located at five thirty-seven Penland Pike and nine oh four Gypsy Hill Road. Mr. Wentz is the owner of both properties and would like to convey approximately one point three four acres from five thirty-seven Penland Pike to nine oh four Gypsy Hill Road by shifting the rear lot line of five thirty-seven Penland Pike. The plans are for simple conveyance only and there's no construction improvements proposed. The application was recommended for approval by the planning commission at their meeting on March tenth, I'm sorry, March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, with the conditions that the applicant comply with the items noted in the review letter and the plan to be updated to reflect parcels A and B and the zoning table to be updated to reflect the existing non-conformities. The proposed resolution, along with those plans and review letters are included and were included in our board packet. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four fourteen, approving a preliminary final subdivision plan to adjust the lot line between five thirty-seven Penland Pike and nine oh four Gypsy Hill Road. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming out, Mr. Wentz. Next up, included in our board packet is a celebration of Arbor Day, which will be on April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. I just got to the one second. Included is a proclamation very similar to the proclamation that we have made in previous years outlining the celebration of Arbor Day. And my computer's not loading, so I can't read it.
Yeah.
Um, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and whereas Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world, whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling clocks and moderating the temperature and cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. It goes on with a few more rareas's and then now therefore the Board of Supervisors of Lower Gwinnett Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania is hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four as Arbor Day and urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, the Board of Supervisors urges all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Proclaim this ninth day of April two thousand and twenty-four. Do we have to vote to approve this proclamation or is it just proclaimed? I'd like to make a motion to approve this proclamation. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now it's proclaimed.
And, and just so, so you all know, we, we had, last year you approved it in perpetuity because we hoped that would be enough for the tree city requirements, but nope, they want you to do this every year.
So it's never going to be in perpetuity. Okay. Very good.
They want their, they want their free publicity every year.
Next up, we have, um, the award bid for annual milling and paving, or paving program to Innovation Construction Services. Included in our board packet was the project description. Um, the authorization, um, and the, and the bids that came in. I don't know if, Jim, do you want to speak to any of it? No? Okay, very good. Um, Innovation and Construction Services made a bid in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Are there any questions or concerns from the board? Any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the award, the bid for annual milling and paving to Innovation Construction Services in the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, two hundred and forty-nine and twenty-five cents. Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is consideration of the bid for ultra-thin bond wearing course as part of the annual paving program to Asphalt Maintenance Solutions Incorporated. Um, their bid was in the amount of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents. Are there any questions? Comments from the board?
Um, I, I just, we just, I just want to confirm, we only got one bid for this. Typical for that type. Oh, okay. Right. That's the bonding. Okay. Is it usually this, it's usually the asphalt maintenance solutions? Is it typically them who are below bidders?
That's it. Any additional questions on the board? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ultra-thin, ultra-thin bond wearing course to asphalt maintenance solution in the amount that I previously stated. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. Next up is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen, approving the disposal of our records so that we can shred our records in our May eleventh shredding event. Are there any questions that, that is included in our board packet? Are there any questions from the board? Outlined are the years, what will be shredded, the years that those records will be shredded. And there's some whereas's in there, of course. Uh, and any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a, a, a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen, approval, approving the dis- disposition of records prior to May, our May eleventh shredding event. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, included in our board packet was our invoices. Um, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the invoices to our finance director? Everyone had a chance to review. Like to make, are there any questions or comments from the public? Like to make a motion to approve the invoices. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes for March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. They were included in the board packet as everyone had a chance to review. Any questions or comments or corrections? Like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Very nice. Next up is the supervisor liaison reports that were included in our board packet. Are there any questions about those liaison reports? I didn't see any, but. I didn't see any, but I'm assuming that there was some somewhere. No, there was no supervisor meeting, so we are going to skip that. Staff updates?
Actually, I think Janine would probably be covering with the only thing that I had. So no, okay.
Okay. Supervisor comments. We'll start with Janine.
Well, I just wanted to congratulate and welcome the King and congratulate Sergeant Rogie on his retirement. I love nights like this when everybody comes out to support our police. I also want to recognize another one of our officers, Sergeant Henry. We'll call Towny. I just learned today that he, um, is the recipient of the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce's Hometown Hero Award. So he'll be honored in June at a lunch, um, but just wanted to make sure the public was aware that we have so many officers, um, who are just doing wonderful things in the community and we are very grateful for our police and, um, you know, very lucky to have such dedicated folks in our department. And that, that's it for me.
Kimmy?
Just to echo what Janine said.
I echo that as well.
Terrible. I want to echo everything first. I want to echo everything that Janine said as well. I also want to, um, make sure that the public is aware that there is going to be a special zoning meeting, um, that's going to be held at our Penland Community Center April 18th at 6:00 PM to talk and discuss. It's going to be a presentation just to explain the zoning process and to talk and discuss, um, or answer any questions that the public may have around zoning. Is there any parking wreck things coming up? Oh, I'm sorry. April 13th, on Saturday's opening day for our Lower Gwinnett Little League. I want to welcome the community to come out and support the Lower Gwinnett Little League for their opening day. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll have a, a day like today. Good weather. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Come on, guys.
Second.
All those in, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.